The fourth order of the Carney School Board of Education meeting, please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Meredith Cole here. Brian Heam. Dan Holloway. John Kern.
Here.
Bruce Schweitzer here. Susan Mormon.
Here.
Darlene Bailey.
Here.
You have a forum. Adopt them in the agenda.
Move that the agenda be approved as presented.
Second. All in favor? Public comment? We have no public comment tonight. Recognitions. First of all softball. Coach.
Good evening. There's a lot of accomplishments that happened this season, but I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. First of all, the softball team were conference district and state champs this year. Just a few statistics that we had. Fielding percentage as a team, we had a 953. We had over 235 RBIs. We scored 284 runs compared to our opponents only scoring 134. Our team batting average was 402, and this was also the most wins in program history at 26. Just a few more stats. Team pitching ERA was a 3.3, which is fantastic. And then last, we had 272 singles, 81 doubles, 12 triples, and 17 home runs this season. The girls did a fantastic job, and they worked so well together, and I am just unbelievably so proud of them. So, thank you very much.
So, we want to-
Do I need to say this to students as well? Sorry. First are gonna be my seniors, Elise Ariano.
So, we're working- hang on a second. We're in a new building, and we kinda have new stuff going on here. So, what we'll do is as you introduce each of them, you can come up and stand, please. And then we have certificates, and I'll explain in advance the certificates we have, I think, for alphabetical orders. So, between Mrs. Schweitzer and I, we'll try to get them all to the right place.
Alright.
Come up here and stand in front of the board member.
Alright. So, again, Elise Ariano. Jayden Barnes. Keddy Casey. Brady Robinson. Katie Anne. Kelsey Herndon. Amy Niewe. Jonathan Lincoln. Seeley Lance. Sabiana McDowell. Casey Morrow. Brooke Taylor. Morgan Pennington. Alyssa Quick. Gray Reynolds. And Whitey Van Der.
So, you read them all off there?
I did. Three of my ones.
Do you wanna hold your light bits for the picture?
Thank you.
Well, we got two for you, so. Oh, sorry. Macy?
Maybe if the coaches, you guys can maybe scoot up, and the coaches can kinda make their- be in the second row? Yeah? Cause I'm not gonna be able- my room isn't that wide. If we can kinda make two rows, so the coaches, they can kinda scoot in behind the girls.
Okay. Hold that for the pic. Oh, yeah. Hold that for the-
Girls, if you wanna scoot up, so your coaches can scoot in behind you a little bit. Yep, perfect. Okay. Parents, I'll give you the picture, and then it'll be your turn. Hang tight. Awesome. Big smile. Hang on. One more. Fantastic. Parents, it's all yours.
Any other parents wanna come up here? Congratulations. Coach Roberts? Here on.
Good evening. First thing, softball. Congratulations. That's amazing. Number two, I just wanna thank all the parents, the board, everybody here, for everything you do for Carney Kids Athletics and Sports, cause we have amazing kids because we have amazing people in our district. So, I'm so proud of them. So. Girls have been in state three years in a row. They were like seventh, eighth, or ninth three years ago, and they wanted to be better, and they came back last year, and we took third. And then this year, we got fourth, and they were a little upset. But it's called life sometimes. But the neat thing is, two years ago, we ran seven underclassmen. And they- six of the seven ran it state. And this year, we're losing two seniors, one which ran. So, we're bringing back six of our top seven kids again. So, the future's bright in cross-country, and we got a bunch of great kids, and we just keep adding great kids. We have three fantastic freshmen that joined this year, plus the other seven kids that came back. So, it's just a great group of kids. I just can't tell you how much fun it is to coach them. Give an example, I did the academic all-state. You have to have a 25 on the ACT or 3.6 GPA, and all seven girls hammered it. I mean, they all- all seven made it without, you know, without any incident. So, I coached the best athletes, the best brightest kids. I just get to coach great kids. I really appreciate it. I'll call them up. Belvedonzi, come on up. Abby Eland, come on up. And Abby's been all-state twice. Is that correct, Abby? Okay. Juniors. Grace Omar. Junior Heidi Adams. Like I said, except for the first two, all the rest are coming back, which makes me happy and sad to sing by. And Lyla Murphy. You are a little thoughtful. Lydia Brock. I'm writing this down, as you can tell. Alex Gensler. And Alex is an amazing athlete and scholar and everything. She's got the second fastest time in Carney history, and we've had a lot of really good teams and girls, so. Abby McQuillan. Daisy Vernon. And Jordan Vaughn. These are the 10 girls that represented Carney, and I believe seven are returning, so it's pretty neat.
You wanna hold them open, please? Good. Scoot in. Good. Perfect. Smile. Okay. Another one. Hang tight. Last one. Parents.
Congratulations to all of you, and if you want to continue to stay for the meeting, you certainly may, but if you have studying to do, now would be your time to go. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Your study. Please enter. Welcome.
Let's face- let's face the board. Now, come this way, and you're gonna stand- you're gonna stand there, and you're gonna face over here, okay? The Board of Education. We're trying to pull through all this.
It's a new room for us, too, so.
Because these- you're talking to the audience, but this is your audience, too. These are the Day of Education members, okay? Okay, you ready? So, you can give us a little more space. Spread out a little bit more. Yeah, spread out a little bit more. We'll have like one list to put on. And it's just a brainstorm. Okay. I'll stand back here. Well, thank you for having us. I'm Rebecca Parks. I'm the principal at LENS, and tonight is our LENS Spotlight. We have- our students are going to be presenting on project-based learning, and they did this whole thing. So, they put together the presentation, they worked together on the script. These students were chosen as student leaders representing each of the six classrooms. So, we have third grade through fifth grade. We have Brady Osborne. Brady, please. We have Waylon Lesby, and we have Aleah Brooks, and we have Ben Keeler, and we have Brave Madison, and we have Abigail Wells. And we also have several- I think we have most of our LENS teachers here as well, so wanna give a shout-out to our LENS teachers. They're doing great work. Okay, boys and girls, they're gonna tell you all about project-based learning, and they're going to relate it to their most recent units of study. Yeah, there you go.
PBL stands for Project-Based Learning. All of LENS does it every day with their class. Sometimes, we even do it with other groups. Today, we are gonna be talking about parts of PBL, like the entry event, driving question, the messy middle, and the presentation. We usually make a project or do experiments with every new PBL. PBL is all about working together, and when stuff doesn't work out, we usually have team meetings, which means we come together and work out what the problem is.
An entry event is when the teacher shows you a video or slideshow about the unit. Then, you usually try to find out what your PBL is about. Here are some pictures of Gary Staub's work. This link helped our class try to guess what the PBL is going to be about. During the scavenger hunt, we tried to find one big animal, one small animal, and one cool animal. The reason for an entry event helps you get excited for the PBL. For our entry event, we learned that we were to be doing something with animals, because in third grade, we learned about animal adaptations.
An entry event is when your teachers show you- your teachers show you something, or you do an experiment. Then, you usually try to guess what your driving question is going to be. An entry event is when your teacher gives you a challenge, or a special visitor comes, and their job has to do with the PBL. An entry event is when your teachers are giving you hints about the unit we will be learning about. We might do an experiment, or a fun activity, or a special guest comes, and their job has to do with what we are learning. We try to guess what our PBL driving question is going to be.
For our entry event, we had a special visitor Zoom with us. He talked about how he makes snacks. Another part of our entry event was, we had a packet, and we researched about all the regions, and we had certain things to research about.
The driving question is what everything in the project is about. After the entry event, the kids get a chance to try and figure out what the driving question is going to be. The teachers then tell us the driving question, and then we get started with our brainstorming on our PBL board.
For our last unit, third grade, the driving question was, how can we teach people about the animals in Missouri?
In fourth and fifth grades, the driving question was, how can we teach others about the regions of the United States?
The messy middle is something that helps us figure some stuff out about the PBL. There are different parts, like the column "knows." That means we talk about stuff that we need to figure- find out. And the other part is "need to know." The other part is "need to knows," and that "knows," and that means we talk about stuff that we already know.
For our project, each group had a region, and we created maps with important information, like cities, attractions, monuments, rivers, and mountains. We wrote essays about our region, and we programmed our robot to move to each area as we presented.
The messy middle is research, 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 and even more research. It can be fun, but it can also be challenging. Everyone in the group does research on the project. On Google Classroom, it has the sites to research on, on the PBL.
PBL is basically the whole part- collaboration is basically the whole part of PBL, because without collaboration in PBL, it would be so messy that the PBL wouldn't even be considered a PBL. In our groups, we had to all have jobs, like the researcher, the drawer, and the team leader. For third grade, our project was creating a walking museum for the Carney Trail, featuring the animals we researched.
The last part of a PBL unit is the presentation. The presentations can be different for each unit. For our animal presentation, we started by covering our sign, all right, then we drew the tree and the branches. Finally, we painted and completed the- once the signs were finished, Gary put the finishing touches on and put them out on the trail. So, then we showed all third grade kids in LENS, and they are still out for the community.
Fourth grade project, we mixed with fifth grade. So, in our presentation, we coded a robot from the lab that moved around to what we are explaining. We told all about everything in the region, including monuments, national parks, landmarks, cities, capitals, states, and rivers. So, does anybody have any questions?
What's your favorite part of the process?
Well, my favorite part was probably when we actually start- started to be able to, like, color and write on the map.
How often does the unit change, and you're working on a new one?
Normally, maybe a week or two. Every week or two.
Have any of you been on the trail and seen where the signs are, placed up?
I think the third graders have.
Yes.
Yeah.
I've seen them. They're great. My kids love them. Yes. Great work.
Great job. Okay, next we have the consent agenda.
Move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. Any questions about any of the consent agenda? No, I gotta look. Nope, I'm good. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Formation items? Financials? Ginger?
We have the October reports presented in your packet. Does anyone have any questions about them?
Thank you. Construction update?
Good evening, everyone. Excited to be here in your new space. So, update of what's going on. So, the district's got a lot of projects over their bond, and there's a lot of good work happening. So, Kevin with the DLR team is here, and they're developing designs on multiple projects right now, and we've been working hand-in-hand with them, doing estimates, working with the district team. There's been a lot of good collaboration, especially recently. So, some of the things that are coming up quickly, next month, we plan to bring bids for the junior high re-roof. That's one of the projects. It's out to bid right now, so we'll plan to bring those to December. And then also, the theater, we're gonna take it in a two-step approach. So, we're gonna bring equipment bids next month, so we can get some of the longer lead times, speakers, and lighting items ordered. And then, we'll probably bring the rest of it, some of the architectural-type things, in January or February. So, next month, we're gonna bring two things to you. And then, they're making a big push to have several of the other projects completed with design by the end of the year. And so, if that happens on schedule, we'll probably bring bids for middle school restrooms, which will happen next summer. It'll probably come in February for board approval of those. The early childhood is planned to go next summer also, so plan to bring those in February. The remaining theater renovations, so any of them, finishes, painting, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, on the theater, so like, obviously going up to bid in January, is that a summer project, or is that gonna be a-
Yeah, the plan is to do that work in the summer. So, we wanna get equipment ordered, so it'll be here by the summer. And then, the rest of the stuff will happen when kids aren't in session. That's the plan.
If equipment comes in, can you update?
Yeah, there's- there's a few things that they're kinda doing- Yeah, there's a few things that they're kind of doing a phase one and a phase two delivery. So there's a few things we're trying to have here in the spring for a spring event. And I don't know exactly which ones those are off the top of my head. And then the remaining equipment, as soon as it gets here, it can get put in.
Okay. But if something comes in full, you guys aren't necessarily holding off to do everything in the summer, you could kind of implement things that...
Yeah, we're trying to do the dirty stuff. If we've got to be messy, we're trying to do that when they're not at school. But equipment's easy to just come in and do a one-for-one replacement, so that's the plan on that.
And the roof bids are going out next week, is that right?
It's out right now. We actually did a pre-bid walkthrough two days ago in the snow, so...
How's the turnout as far as the...
We had probably six or seven folks there at the walkthrough. And we're going to do another walkthrough actually next week because temperatures weren't awesome.
Is it a large enough roof to get some good action on it?
There's an interest in it. It's a nice roofing job, so it'd be a big project. Yeah. And then elementary school, obviously, is on the agenda. So we'll probably come February or March for that approval, depending on the timing there. And then that project kind of kicks off late spring next year and then turns over for the fall of '24. So lots of good action happening. Yeah, everything's tracking how it should be right now.
EEC with the kids, big people moved out, little kids moved in. Have they been able to kind of use that space that freed up in that building?
That would be a question for somebody...
You bet to him.
I handed out how we can do there. They were using that day.
So market conditions, obviously, you know, the last six months have changed. Of course, we've seen inflation, we've seen, you know, rising costs, longer lead times, right? So the question is, are we seeing that soften a little bit for next year, you know, year and a half out? I mean, what are you seeing as far as that marketplace has well been?
Yeah, no, good question. So obviously, over the last year, things have spiked very rapidly. It's been very volatile. But we do have three or four recent large projects that have bid in the Kansas City area, okay? A couple of them are ours that actually bid in the last two weeks. And then a couple are others that we've kind of got in the history. And things, most of the projects have come in on or under budget recently, so we feel good about that. Because predicting where it's been going has been a little more challenging the last year. So we feel like there's great competition out there. We did a middle school in Alatha. They came in under budget. Did some work in Pleasant Hill. They came in right on budget. And so we're feeling good. We think that it's important to try to get projects bid sooner rather than later just to prevent any more escalation or volatility going up. But we feel, we've adjusted all of our estimates based on these latest results. So they're helping us kind of predict next month or two.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, thank you.
Audit report.
Move to approve the audit report as presented by Westbrook and Co.
Second.
Good evening. I'm Brian Eckhoff with Westbrook and Company. We have recently finalized your audit. We're going to do a brief overview of the financial statements and recommendations. If you have questions as we're going through it, don't hesitate to stop me. We can kind of address them as we go. If you look at your actual audit report, you will see that the actual report this year has significantly changed. Statement on auditing standards 134 through 140 has changed all the reports this year. So I used to tell you to turn to the top of page two and that's where your opinion paragraph was. They've actually moved the opinion paragraph to the very first paragraph in the report. And you'll see that it says that it is presented fairly. So this is a clean audit opinion or exactly what you want to see in your financial statements. Page 12 is your statement of activities. It's kind of a different financial statement because it adds your revenues through the middle of the page with your net cost of doing business on the right-hand column. Normally, we highlight food service and community services here. Normally, districts want to know how much money they're losing on food service. With the 100% free and reduced this year, your district is actually making money on food service. And we actually made about $95,000, $96,000 on food service this year. So DESI requires you to track that balance and spend that on future food service expenditures. With the standard loss that normally occurs with food service, that balance will dwindle in the next couple of years and we won't have to come up with a plan to spend it. It'll just be your normal spending of food service dollars, so... Page 13 is your balance sheet. We had $19.5 million in assets as of June 30th between the three funds. The special revenue fund is your teachers' fund and normal practices take that to zero balance as of the end of the year. So you can see at the bottom of the page is the fund balances. Those fund balances are split between restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. Your restricted in the general fund of $22,000 is your professional development. DESI implemented the 1% rule again this year. So we had $22,000 that was not spent, that was required to be spent, that allowed to be spent this year. In the assigned category, we have food service. That food service balance that you made this year is assigned for future food service expenditures. The remaining $742,000 is for student activities. This is your clubs, organization, things like that, where it's earmarked for those organizations. And then the remaining balance in your general fund is always shown as unassigned because that is used for day-to-day operations of the district. Your debt service fund is always restricted for future debt service. It cannot be spent on anything else. And then your capital projects fund, we have a couple items here. You issued a bond right at the end of the year and you actually received an $880,000 prepayment on that bond. So that 80 is sitting in restricted because that is unspent bond proceeds. And then the remaining amount is committed and assigned. So you had about $620,000 that is committed. Those are projects that you had approved as a board prior to June 30th but had not been paid. And then the assigned portion is the remaining balance in the capital projects fund. Your actual committed balance, if you look at the footnotes, is actually like 1.5 million, but it's made up of the bond funds and the actual fund balance that's left over outside of the bond fund. So this is a statement of your revenue and expenditures and changes in fund balance. You can see this year, we had a net change in fund balance of an increase of about $1.4 million. So it was a good financial year for the district. Overall, though, you can see that most of it occurred in the capital projects fund. So overall, though, financially wise, in the operating fund, we had a decrease of about $157,000 this year. Page 20 has a summary of your debt. The general obligation bonds come in at about $28 million. And the direct borrowings are about $2.8, almost $2.9 million for a total debt of about $31.2 million as of June 30th. You will have a balloon payment in three years. Just be aware, you'll see your debt service fund start to grow in the next couple of years. And it will prepare itself for that balloon payment that'll be made in 2025. And your remaining payments go through 2037. Your direct borrowings have just your standard annual payments all the way through 2030. Now, this is a five-year comparison of your revenues. The chart doesn't really look that drastic on the federal side. However, if you actually look at your federal revenues the last two years, you went from about $1.6 million in federal revenues to $3.4 and $3.1 the last two years. So that's that influx of federal dollars for the COVID funding. So just be aware of that. That was one-time funding influx. It will not continue forward. And then this is a five-year comparison of your expenditures. Your salaries and benefits have always been around that 74% to 77% range overall. So not a significant fluctuation there.
Where do we rank, I'm going to ask you, Ed, or Brian, what do we rank with our peer group on that 74?
Pretty consistent.
Pretty consistent.
Yeah. This is a five-year comparison of your reserve ratio and average daily attendance. Reserve ratio this year, I think it's around 25%, 26%. And that is considered a healthy, financially stable school district. It is slightly down from last year. The last two years, it's been a little bit higher due to that influx of the COVID funding. So exactly what we expected to see in districts. The majority of my districts have had the exact same scenario where they've had a little bump in reserve ratio because of those additional funds. The average daily attendance, you can see last year, the big dip in average daily attendance. That was the COVID year. This year, we did rebound slightly. Just be aware of it going forward. We hope this trend continues on the uphill track with DESI's funding, you know, being your three-year average or your higher three years. So keep an eye on this just to make sure we're aware of it going forward. While we're here, we look at Missouri laws and regulations as it pertains to budgeting and attendance, transportation, things like that. If we come across anything, we bring it to your attention. And you can see here that it says it was fairly stated. So we did not identify any deficiencies with state compliance. We also look at internal control. We don't give an opinion on internal control, but we use it in our risk assessment and our areas of where we're going to spend additional time during the audit. If we find any deficiencies in internal control, we bring it to your attention in this report. And you can see that it says we did not identify any deficiencies. So we did go around central office and ask about everybody's job titles and what they were doing and things like that because we did have some transition this year. And all of the procedures that they indicated they were doing were actually the procedures that were written that they were supposed to be doing. So it's always nice to actually get the answer you're supposed to get whenever you do the interview, so... You are over $750,000 in federal expenditures, so you're required to have a federal program audit, also known as uniform guidance. This report is the report with that. So you can see at the very bottom, it says we didn't identify any deficiency. So another clean report on the federal program side of things. This is the summary of scheduled findings and question costs for federal programs. Unmodified means clean opinion or good audit report. So unmodified is exactly what you want to see. And then "no" all the way down means there's no findings and no question costs. You can see that we tested the child nutrition cluster, so that is where we spent the majority of our time during our federal program auditing. And then the very bottom one, did you qualify as a low-risk audit team? Uniform guidance was written for accrual basis financial statements. 99% of school districts in the state of Missouri are cash basis, so you will never qualify as a low-risk audit team. Just know that we will always be required to audit a higher percentage of your federal programs because of it do not change to accrual basis financial statements, stay cash basis. Just know we'll audit a higher percentage. None of none means there's no findings on the federal side. So no state findings, no federal findings, no internal control comments. So a clean report, exactly what you want to see in your financial statements and your audits. We did have two things that we were going to highlight and require communications. These are immaterial things that we come across where we just think we can either make improvements to the district or something I want to bring to your attention to... The second one's a pat on my back because we found you more money. But the first one is payroll. When you're looking at your salary schedules, you cannot determine who is considered exempt and non-exempt by just looking at the salary schedules. So this recommendation is that you go through your salary schedules, determine who is exempt, who is not exempt, and make that more clear. Get a stance and follow it. The second one is the transportation overhead allocation. While we're here, we look at your efficiency calculation. DESI does an efficiency calculation, looking at your ridership, your mileage, and your expenditures. And if you fall in this window of 104 to 134, they determine how much they're going to deduct out of your pay. If you are under the 104, you're considered to be efficient. That is where you guys fell this year, under 104%. So you are allowed to allocate 5% of your total costs from your administrative function codes down to your transportation code. All this is a journal entry. You're just moving funds between different function codes. By doing that, we moved about $42,000 worth of expenditures. And since DESI is fully funding transportation, fully funding, you know, the allocation is fully funded, it should increase your transportation funding this year by $20,000. So it's always nice when I can say that we actually provided a benefit. So overall, one recommendation for a district your size is phenomenal. It's a great audit this year.
Questions for Brian?
I got to be on, I was on the audit committee. Great job. I mean, I did enjoy working with you, Ginger and your team. Incredible job. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, next on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, we did vote. Yes. All in favor of approving the audit? Oppose? Okay, rescind board policies.
Move to rescind board policies. C-140-P, G-250-P, G-275-P, S-100-P, I-110-P, I-125-P, I-130-P, I-160-P, and I-185-P.
Second. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Adoption of board policies on second reading?
Move to adopt board policy numbers. C-140-P, G-250-P, G-275-P, S-100-P, I-110-P, with a change in the second paragraph to read in grades kindergarten through five. I-125-P, I-130-P, I-160-P, I-185-P on the second reading as presented.
Second. Questions?
So I think it's important to make sure that we note that these are all legal laws that were passed by the state legislature and that's why we're amending and changing our policies to make sure that we're in legal standing with the state. I just...
That's right.
And then head counsel, you know, head counsel who assists us made these changes or made these recommendations or changes. I think it's always important to note that.
I agree. Okay, any other questions, comments? All right. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you.
You did great.
Much better job. First round.
Yeah.
Okay, approve federal program evaluation.
Approve the federal programs program evaluation as presented.
Second. Mrs. Cobb?
Okay, there's more detailed information in the written evaluation, but I was just giving you a quick overview of the federal programs. Title I, Title II, homeless, which is also McKinney-Bento, and ELL. First, English language learners. Of course, these kiddos, they have double the challenge. Not only are they learning the content in the classroom, but they're doing it in their second language, trying to pick up English as they can. Currently, we are serving 11 ELL students and we have four on monitor. You can see what we have served. Last year, it was nine. The year before, it was 11. So we hang right in there. We do have one staff member who does work. We say she is full-time. That's primarily what she does. It's Mona Snyder. She also works with our deaf students. You know, if this number, we know our demographics are changing. If this number were to raise, I believe, and this is actually Heather's program, but if this was to raise, I believe the number is 19, then we would have to have an actual certified ELL teacher, which Mona is not. She does a great job, but she is not a certified. So that is kind of something we need to keep on our radar. Title I, of course, that serves our higher need schools, which for us, our title schools are Dogwood and Carney Elementary. And you can see the free and reduced percentages as we have gone. Carney Elementary is, it keeps going on. So currently, we have two full-time teachers who actually lead the programs. One in each building that leads that program. We have Tammy Thomas at Carney Elementary and Jen Raymond out at Dogwood. Additionally, out at Dogwood, we now have a full-time teacher. And we have retired teachers using them on a 550 basis. But this year, we have a full-time teacher out at Dogwood to meet that need. And we have a half-time teacher at Carney Elementary for our title students. Also very involved in that process is the elementary curriculum coordinator, Ally Stewart, as well as the reading interventionist. They really help. They really help keep that data. They help with the scheduling of getting those kids in those small groups, those small reading groups with Tammy and Jen Raymond. They do a great job tracking all that. Of course, they're qualifying through, they do aims web testing, and if we do not see progress, then they can qualify for that. Currently, we are serving 176 kids in our title reading. And you can kind of see the numbers. Last year, we were at 156, and the year before that, we were at 226. Any questions on any of that?
Does that decrease that 150? Is that COVID?
2021, that is the year they came back to us. So those numbers were high. And then the 2122, that number would have been taken at the end of the year when kids would have been released. And then our current, that is beginning of the year. And I will say, we, in some of our lower grades there, we, there are a couple tier one issues that we are working on currently, that we have some higher numbers in some of the earlier grades than we'd like to see. So just part of the success, we feel like out of the 156 students from last year, 26% of those kids, we did close the gap so that those kids were on reading level. And then the other 24, they were severely below grade level reading, and they ended up, I mean, they have a great data chart, and, you know, the kids, if they're severely below, they're in the red, and then they move up until they're in a dark green. So we have moved kids out of the red up into the yellow or light green. So they've made huge progress. If you look at our numbers, as they go through, you can see from second grade, you'll see some higher numbers by the time they get to fifth grade. Those are lowest number of kids who we are serving in title reading because we have moved those kids out. They've gotten to grade level, and we've moved them out of that special reading. So we always survey our title parents. This year, we got 50, or this was last year, 52% of the parents did return the survey, which is always good. And that's 44 more surveys than we got before that. The strengths were that 99% of the parents feel like their kids are benefiting from the program. And 88% of the parents felt that they're involved in their children's reading plan. We thought that's a strength, but that's also something we need to work on because we'd like to see 100% of the kids involved in their children's reading plan. These are the goals for Title I and ELL. Just, we want those ELL kiddos to be successful in the regular educational setting. We want them all to get to grade level proficiency. We just want them to be able to function normally in the regular classroom. That's our goal. And the other part is, we really want to get more participation with parents. McKinney-Bento, which is also our homeless kiddos. It is a federal law, and the things that we help them with are transportation, the residency requirements. A lot of times, these kids, they come in, they might not have birth certificates, they might not have immunizations. I mean, the law is, we have to get them enrolled right away. What we see a lot of is they are doubled up with other families, they've lost housing somehow. But if they do not have fixed, regular nighttime housing, then they can qualify for McKinney-Bento. And we catch these all different ways. Since we have gone to the online, the registration gateway, there's a portion in there where they have to answer questions, and that is how we seem to be catching a whole lot of them right now. We just try to remove barriers so they can, we can get them in school and help them however we can. Our social workers do a great job working with these kids. I am the district liaison, Megan Masters, who's our lead social worker. She is the homeless coordinator. She actually goes and she talks to each and every family and figures out exactly what they need, if they need food, if they need clothing. And I would say, we have an incredibly generous community that they've got all kinds of clothes over at the support services building, anything that these kiddos come in needing. If we don't have it already, the social workers make sure they get it, so they really watch out for these kids. These are our numbers for McKinney-Bento. So we've actually, and there was a time that, a couple of years ago, we had, I know, over 90, so it's not quite as much this year. It's still early. In addition, we take a lot of guidance from Desi, and we have gotten different guidance this year. Before, it was if they are doubled up, if they don't have their own housing, they're McKinney-Bento. And now Desi's telling us, you know what, if they've been in the same situation at least a year, and it looks pretty permanent for them, then we're not going to qualify them as McKinney-Bento anymore. So that number will go up, especially after the holidays. That number usually jumps right after the first of the year. But I don't anticipate it's probably going to be as high as it has been in the past because we really aren't qualifying by this many. We do try to take away all the barriers if we have kids. We have, we have several McKinney-Bento kids who are participating in sports. If they need the sports shoes, they need the equipment, whatever it is, we try to remove any barriers that we can so that they can participate. And this can be, you know, they're dealing with enough, and we're hoping that school can be a good, safe place for them, and they can feel involved and a part of the school environment. Title II, I won't go into a lot because I report to you on Title II, it's really professional development. And I report to you on professional development and a separate program evaluation. But I will tell you that these are the areas where we really, it's really program improvement. And so these are the areas that we did spend our Title II money in last year. It was PBL, our Orton-Gillingham, our reading program, the membership fees and the different programs going on with the Regional Professional Development Center in Kansas City, paying people to come in and do our EdCamp PD in January, paying outside people to come in and present the best program, the Behavior Intervention Support Program at Hawthorne Elementary, as well as Kathy Battles, who is our math interventionist. And our goal always with all of our professional development is to give opportunities for our teachers, because we know the way to increase student achievement is to make sure our teachers are well-prepared. Questions?
Any questions? Thank you. All in favor of approving program report? Opposed? Thank you. Program of studies?
Move to approve the program of studies for the 2023-2024 school year as presented.
Second? Dr. Gesserson?
So when we were starting talking about, when Jennifer Haderbees and parents talked about the tier diploma, talking about MBA acquisition, that our sophomores are going to have to have this year, one big thing, a common theme was, okay, where is that in our program of studies? How can we identify classes in our program of studies? So that was a big goal with this this year. If you noticed, there was a lot of red markings in the first one. That was just getting those statements of this class, or this is where we can get an MBA presented in that program of studies. So that was mostly all. Everything else, there wasn't a whole lot of changes. There's just semantic changes. We only added one new class. So we really went a whole lot of things. So the things we did, we added the crest of the title page. It's been lost for a long time. I think the only time I ever see it is graduations, when we start pulling out. We put it up in the building, so it's kind of cool. So also changed the diploma options for the classes of 25 and 26. I imagine it was on the academic services website. We added all the AP courses and the courses that could provide students with an MBA on the MBA Quick Plans section, which is right on page three, just so the parents knew what courses their kids could take, dual credit courses, AP courses they could take. We added a definition and examples of market-based lessons. We did add one intern opportunity, which is the banking and financial services. We're hoping to get that up and going next year, depending on our business members, so we'll see, we'll see how that goes. And then on the course list, we added a symbol to show that it was a dual credit class or an AP course, that students had to have nine hours to get an MBA. Those are really all the little changes we have. So you see that big document has all those red markings in it? That really boils down to that.
Hey, Andy, do you think that you're always going to be changing the MBAs? Do you think that there's always going to be, like, are we always looking for more opportunities to add MBAs to our tier diplomas? So this is going to be an every year, hey, we found another couple opportunities? Or do you think that this is like, hey, we're done here?
Okay, this is going to be a living document. We got, we got a lot of staff who are starting to get on board and come up with other opportunities. They see other things that kids are doing, and they're getting really excited about it. So this is one thing, it'll be more and more and more. That's the goal, right? We want every kid to come out there with one, right? 100%. And we got to find stuff that every kid wants to do and every kid enjoys. So that's kind of the goal we're looking towards right now. So, yeah, it'll be, you'll see more and more and more.
Good.
As a consumer of this information, I just want to say good job, because I think that's been the struggle for me as a parent, saying, okay, where do I find the list of ELL MBA? So it's good to know that this is coming. One other question is, it's always, program studies has typically been like a PDF document. I was wondering if there are any plans to make it more dynamic with links, search capability? Because that's probably my next struggle, is I got to search through everything to find stuff.
All right, so that is an MBA opportunity that we're looking forward to, but we got to go with Jake Hill. We had a.
That's great.
Yeah, we had a girl who moved in from Minnesota, a little senior girl. She moved in, and we went back and looked at her stuff, and everything was online, and it just clicks. So you go, when you go to my department, you just click the social studies department, and all those classes come up and have everything. And we kind of looked at it, and we're like, all right, this is pretty cool. We got to do something like that. So that's something that, yeah, we're looking at. I don't know if our kids will be able to do that. I think they'd be able to maintain that. So that's something that, once we get this approved, we're probably going to go to Jennifer and Ryan and say, hey, this is something pretty cool. We want to look at this to make it.
It'd be really helpful.
Yes, it would be nice.
Thanks, guys.
All in favor of approval of the program of studies for 2023-24? All opposed? Thank you.
You want me to read this one?
Set the filing dates for board candidacy?
Summary, too.
Do you want me to read it?
Do you want me to read the summary? No, I have it printed out. Got it all printed. I'm ready. It's red. It's red. Move to authorize the publication of filing dates for board candidates for the April 4, 2023 election as required by law to include the opening date of December 6, 2022, at 8:00 a.m., and the closing date of December 27, 2022, at 5:00 p.m., as official dates for accepting a declaration as a school board candidate. To designate the Carney R1 School District Administrative Office at 425 West Washington Street, Carney, Missouri, as the location for filing. Further, the times for filing will be between office hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. weekdays, noting that the filing location will close on December 16, 2022, at 1:00 p.m., and remain closed until December 27, 2022, when the administrative office will open for the filing from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And to name the county clerk of Clay County as the election authority and the secretary of the Board of Education to be directed and notified, the county clerk in writing by January 24, 2023, and include a copy of legal notice and sample ballot for the April 4, 2023 election. And to direct the secretary to forward to the county clerk of the Clay County and county clerk of Clayton County deposits for the cost of the election as required by law. Filing will not occur when the schools are closed for inclement weather. In the event that the district is closed due to a public health-related event, other than on December 6, 2022, filing will be appointed only and made by contacting the Board Secretary at 816-628-4116.
Second? Any questions?
No.
All in favor? All opposed? Board member comments?
Exciting to see softball across country and then also our spotlight with the LYNES program. It is, we're having, we're having a good start to this year. It's, I don't want to jinx it or anything like that, but I'm very proud of the work that we've done, Emily, the work that you've done coming in here. This has been a good, exciting start of the year. And.
It's fun to be a Bulldog.
It's a great time to be a Bulldog.
For your team.
Dave, thanks for all your, and your team's efforts to host and all the stuff that goes behind that, because it's a lot of work.
It's been a lot of fun.
I've got a couple of things. Meredith is our newest member of the board, has created, completed the MSBA Essential Training. So we have a certificate for you and your PIN as an MSBA Essential Board Member. So congratulations on completing your training. And I would also, I'd like to thank the board members and the staff, but the recent MSBA convention, we had good attendance there. We had several folks go to several sessions, including the safety summit, which I think was really important for us to be at, as well as several other sessions. It was in Kansas City, so it was easy to get to. But thank you all for taking the time to do that.
You as well. You spent a few hours there.
I got soaked, and I bought a new umbrella. Related to that, and we just passed the information related to the filing deadline, and I'm not going to read it all again. However, on Monday night, we will have a information session workshop, I can't remember exactly what we're calling it, for those who are interested in school board candidacy. The filing deadline is coming up, but it's an information session where we will have some somewhat formal presentation of what it means to be a school board member, what the process is, what the expectations are. That will be from 5:30 to 7:00 on Monday, November 21st. So this is something that I don't believe we have done before, so I'm looking forward to having those who would like to know more about school board participation to come and visit with us about that. So hope you all will pass the word if you haven't already. And I know Ray has been working to get the word out among our various groups. And speaking of Ray, we have a couple of things we'd like to recognize you for. It's our understanding that you received a couple of awards related to a couple of stories that you did in the Bulldog News and about a certain Eagle Scout project that benefited Carney Elementary, which I am certainly well aware of. But you received an award of commendation in the marketing special purpose publication, and you received an award of merit for writing for these, for these stories. So come on up here. We've got little certificates for you. Thank you very much.
Could I do a selfie?
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray, since you've been on board, I know you've worked very hard to get the board, or get the word out. And that is one of our board goals, is to be as transparent as possible in our communication and to make sure people know what's going on. So we really do appreciate your efforts for that.
Yes. Ray, good job.
Wouldn't want to be anywhere else. Thank you.
And the last thing I have is, again, just thanking folks for involvement. And the staff, you all have put in a lot of hours. And we have a lot of moving parts right now with work on the bond issue, the strategic planning meetings, which have been going on. And I know several community members, several teachers, a lot of our staff have been participating in those. And that work is continuing and will be winding up soon. So I want to thank everyone for all of your work related to all of that. Okay, next, important dates. November twenty-first, as I mentioned, Board of Education Candidate Info Session. Twenty-third to the twenty-fifth, it's a Thanksgiving break. And so hopefully, folks will get a little rest.
Oh, and the turkey trot.
And the turkey trot? Oh, yes. It's not there, yes.
My family's so excited about it.
Well, thanks. I love the turkey trot. I will be, I don't have to work this year, so if I'm out across country, so I will be lucky. That is Thanksgiving morning. December fifth, the Strategic Planning Committee meeting wrap-up. December sixth, board candidate filing begins. Our next board meeting will be December fourteenth, the end of the semester, which, wow, that's quick. December sixteenth, and then December twenty-seven, board candidate filing ends. Those are our December dates. Ms. Leans?
Carry me on. Put one before. Sorry. Action for closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in December, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under Section six one zero dash zero two one of the Missouri sunshine law.
Roll call, please. Go second.
We're starting now.
Started to. I got it. I got it. Sorry. Roll call, please. Meredith Cole?
Yes.
Brian Hamp? Dan Holloway? John Kerr?
Yes.
Bruce Whitehead?